This evening, we're going to read a proclamation for Domestic Violence Week. Get these glasses down here so I can see. Okay. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, men, and children of every age, background, and belief, with nearly one in four women and one in seven men in the United States have suffered severe physical violence by partners, intimate partners, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month involved from the Day of Unity held in October of 1981, conceived by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence with intent to correct and advocate across the nation who were working to end violence against women and their children. And whereas, the Day of Unity soon became an entire week devoted to a range of activities conducted at local, state, and national levels with common theme of mourning those who have died because of domestic violence, celebrating those who have survived, and connected those with workers to end violence, which further involved the first Domestic Violence Awareness Month observed October of 1987, an annual, annually since that time. And whereas, during the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we reaffirm our dedication to forge a community where no one suffers the hurt and hardship that domestic violence causes. We recommit to doing everything in our power to uphold the basic human rights to be free from violence and abuse. Now therefore, we, James R. Knight Jr., Mayor of Hopkinsville, and Jerry Gillum, Christian County Judge Executive, do hereby claim October 2024 as Domestic Violence Month in Hopkinsville, Christian County, and we call upon all the citizens to support the effort to heighten awareness and work to end all forms of domestic violence dated the 15th day of October 2024. Thank you. If I can get all of y'all to come up front, let's stand up a picture together.
(applause)
Bring it up, boy.
What?
Who wants to bring it up?
Yeah, now Toby will turn it up.
For being here this evening, I'd like to call this City Council meeting on October the 15th to order, and next we will item two, we will call on Ward 11 for invocation.
Today I have Mr. Kayan Banks. He's seven-year-old. He's attend Millbrook Elementary, and he also attend All-Nation House of Prayer. He's going to lead us in prayer today.
Father God, I ask that you bless us as we have this meeting tonight. I pray that you will lead and guard us, and that you will is done, and that you be pleased with us in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Can I get everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Bill, thank you for that, and thank you to Men to Be for being here tonight to take care of the things. All righty, roll call, please, Ms. Britten.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Here.
Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Limeburger.
Councilmember Keel.
Here.
Councilmember Bill.
Here.
Councilmember Handy.
Present.
And we do have a quorum.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Item five, boards and recognition, we have none of them, so we will move into item six, public comments. If anyone has a public comment they'd like to speak to, please state your name and address at the podium. You have three minutes. Floor is open.
Good evening, Mayor Knight, Mr. Willen, council members. Thank you for a wonderful proclamation reading declaring Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'm Heather Lancaster, I'm the executive director at Sanctuary, and here tonight are the hard-working, dedicated, frontline staff of Sanctuary. Tonight, I just want to share a few words about Sanctuary, our local domestic violence shelter and sexual assault resource center. While you may know, our mission is to serve clients who have been affected by violence through the assistance of our emergency shelter, our therapy program, relocation, and case management, it would be worthy to share with you and describe recent updates in Sanctuary's vision plan. This past September, with the input of staff and board members, we developed this vision statement: Survivors healed and empowered in a community free of violence. Is this something you imagine for our community also? This statement is a nod to survivors who have been impacted by domestic violence and sexual assault. The statement alludes to healing which points to the many, many options that we provide at Sanctuary, options that range from support groups to therapy, the feeling of safety in both adults and in children. Empowering survivors is what we strive to do in providing opportunities for self-growth and confidence and self-esteem. We have options for survivors to attend parenting groups, job training, job placement, while working towards independence outside of the walls of Sanctuary. Lastly, the portion that ends with "community free of violence," it points to our collaborative spirit partnering with schools and other community groups and resources to equip each of us with the strength to join together and be positive bystanders in disturbing situations so that we all have a part in ending domestic violence. In closing, I just want to highlight service numbers captured in this past year. From July 2023 through June 2024, we provided 7,003 bed nights, 1,073 individual counseling and therapy sessions, 1,883 crisis calls received on our 24/7 crisis hotline staffed by live advocates, 781 in-person court, legal, and medical advocacies, and 100 children were served this past year. Again, I want to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share with you the impacts of domestic violence and share with you and highlight services provided by Sanctuary. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. (applause) Floor is still open for public comments. If anybody'd like to make public comments this evening? All righty, seeing none, and we'll move into item seven, Mayor's Comments. I would like to say thank you to everyone that attended the Walk to End Al- Alzheimer's, excuse me, I'll get it right here in a second. I'd like to give a big shout-out to Toby and him for the bunny run and bunny hop that we had last weekend. I'd like to say thank you to Tracy Brumfield and Nikki Chambers and everyone that was part of the Focus 21 group that met here on Saturday morning. We had a good group and had a lot of conversation. Thank you. Callister's Deli's grand opening was yesterday, had a lot of people out, a lot of good sandwiches, and had a lot of fun there. Nikki and them from my office got to go there. I was at another meeting, but I appreciate everyone that was there. And this is our last council meeting before election time. I will plead with everyone, please get out and vote. It is your right to get out and vote, get out and vote, and be heard. That way, if you vote, you have every right in the world to complain if you vote, okay? Because you do. Because either you vote for whoever they win or lose, you still have a right to say, "I tried." All right, now, I will call on Mr. Mann to come down front. We have a little bit of business for Mayor's Youth Council to take care of tonight before we get out of Mayor's Comments, and we'll come around right here. You've got them, and when your name is called, would you please just come stand up around front here for us, please?
All right, this is our 2024 Mayor's Youth Council. We're going to start with Deontre Coleman. We've got Madison Crutchfield. Carabella Fowler. Jakayla Grubbs. Maybe Irving. Foster Jackson. Semi Neal. Lacey Page. Ari Pedri. Sahara Peterson. AV Roberts. Ashley Russell. Gavin Smith. Lilly Westerfield. And Cameron Williams. If you guys will stay right there, smile pretty, we're going to get a couple of pictures with the mayor, and I think, yeah, look toward the aisle. And if you all will step out to the lobby area, Ms. Nikki Steger has got some gifts for you before you go, and some information for this Saturday.
Thank you, everyone, for being part of the Mayor's Youth Council. We do appreciate that, and we'll have a lot of fun this year, what we're doing there. Get my glasses back out. It does make, oh, man. All righty, moving into item eight, reports from officers, committee, and guest speakers. We're going to, item A is healthcare update, and we're going to call Mac Majors to come down and give us a little brief information on it.
Good evening, Mayor Knight, City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to give you all a brief update on the healthcare program. I know it seems like just yesterday I was here, but last month I was going through the renewal process, met with Kenny and Troy and Melissa to deliver the health insurance renewal and discuss it, and I specifically asked if I could come present in front of you just now rather than waiting until a later date, because unfortunately, the spending trend continues, and I have concerns. As most of you all are aware, City of Hopkinsville is a planned sponsor of a self-funded health insurance program. Basically, the City of Hopkinsville established a health insurance company decades ago to fund and provide benefits for its employees, and it's worked, it's been, it's worked quite awesome over the 20 years I've worked on it. Last three and a half years, we've seen our claims experience spike, and we've made some adjustments along the way, but when healthcare continues to go up at 10%, it doesn't take long for it to double, and we're watching that in front of us today. I've been tracking your cost for, ever since I've been involved, and I've been involved in this for over 20 years. Over the last three years, we've run in significant deficits, meaning the spending has significantly exceeded the funding that's going into the program. Robert and Melissa have done, and council for that matter, has done a magical job of finding monies to sort of bridge the gaps or fill the gaps where the funding was, what was that, a shortfall? Through 2024, and this is through August, I actually got claims experience through September just yesterday, we're spending $1,240 per employee per month on health and dental benefits. That number came down just slightly to 1,206 through September. Typically, towards the end of a plan year, your claims cost does retreat or come backwards. I'd hope to see a larger decrease in the month of September, so we have our fingers crossed in October, November, and December that that number trends backwards, but through August, the funding deficit's about $348 per employee per month. Well, when you multiply that by 240 participants times 12 months, that's a million-dollar shortfall if things were to continue on the path that they're trending. Now, as I mentioned, several weeks ago, I'm meeting with
Foster Jackson. Semi Neal. Lacey Page. Ashley Russell. Lily Westerfield. And Cameron Williams. If you guys will stay right there, smile pretty, we're going to get a couple of pictures with the mayor, and I think, yeah, look toward the aisle. And if you all will step out to the lobby area, Ms. Nikki Steger has got some gifts for you before you go and some information for this Saturday.
Thank you, everyone, for being part of the Mayor's Youth Council. We do appreciate that, and we'll have a lot of fun this year, what we're doing there. Get my glasses back out. It does make... Alrighty. Moving into item eight, reports from officers, committee, and guest speakers. We're going to, item A is healthcare update, and we're going to call on Mac Majors to come down and give us a little brief information on it.
Good evening, Mayor Knight, City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to give you all a brief update on the healthcare program. I know it seems like just yesterday I was here, but last month I was going through the renewal process, met with Kenny and Troy and Melissa to deliver the health insurance renewal and discuss it. And I specifically asked if I could come present in front of you just now rather than waiting until a later date, because unfortunately, the spending trend continues, and I have As most of you all are aware, City of Hopkinsville is a planned sponsor of a self-funded health insurance program. Basically, the City of Hopkinsville established a health insurance company decades ago to fund and provide benefits for its employees. And it's worked, it's been a, it's worked quite awesome over the, over the 20 years I've worked on it. Last three and a half years, we've seen our claims experience spike, and we've made some adjustments along the way. But when healthcare continues to go up at 10%, it doesn't take long for it to double, and we're watching that in front of us today. I've been tracking your cost for, ever since I've been involved, and I've been involved in this for over 20 years. Over the last three years, we've run in significant deficits, meaning the spending has significantly exceeded the funding that's going into the program. Robert and Melissa have done, and council for that matter, has done a magical job of finding monies to sort of bridge the gaps or fill the gaps where the funding was, what was that, a shortfall? Through 2024, and this is through August, I actually got claims experience through September just yesterday, we're spending $1,240 per employee per month on health and dental benefits. That number came down just slightly to 1,206 through September. Typically, in the, towards the end of a plan year, your claims cost does retreat or come backwards. I'd hope to see a larger decrease in the month of September. So we have our fingers crossed in October, November, and December that that number trends, trends backwards. But through August, the funding deficit's about $348 per employee per month. Well, when you multiply that by 240 participants times 12 months, that's a ba, that's a million-dollar shortfall, if things were to continue on the path that they're trending. Now, as I mentioned several weeks ago, I'm meeting with Kenny, Troy, and Melissa, and we're talking about the health renewal, and Anthem's renewal was a very fair one. And every year, I bring to leadership at the City of Hopkinsville what it costs to get out of this program and look at a fully insured traditional plan. I do it every year. And the one positive thing that a fully insured program brings to you is predictability. You know exactly what your costs are, and you aren't in the risk business. The problem is, is the fully insured quote that we received this year was about $1 million higher than where we are running today with absolutely no opportunity to save if the claims experience improves. So it makes absolutely no sense to get out of what we're doing. Here's the problem. You know, we've, we've been able to create some surplus over the course of time. Anytime the surplus gets to $200,000, Melissa and I get nervous. Well, we're, we're there. $294,000 in reserves, coupled with the spending or the deficit spending that we're in right now buys us about four months, which doesn't get us to next fiscal year. Hopefully, if history means anything, that slows down some and buys us more time. But I, but I truly believe we're in a position, as we talk about next fiscal year's budget, to look seriously at increasing what we're putting into the plan on a monthly basis rather than inject lump sum monies when things get awry. Just some history, in 2021, we built a surplus. That's where we want to be. We want to build reserves so that we don't have to keep coming back to you for more money. But in 2022, we ran at a $417,000 deficit. In 2023, we ran at a $400,000 deficit. And year-to-date, we're running at a $662,000 deficit. That's a tough pill to swallow when there aren't a lot of options out there. Here's what I think's real important. I think it's real important to compare kind of our program to other public employer plans in this city. I have, for a long time, tracked what plans are paying for, as far as the costs concerned, what their benefits look like, and what the contribution strategy looks like, so that you can get an idea of what your peer groups are doing. Up at the top, where it says total composite cost 1,240, as of September, it's 1,206. But if I look at five other nonprofit entities that self-fund their health plan in Hopkinsville, Kentucky, that average is about $1,280. So the City of Hopkinsville's running about average when it comes to cost. So that's not a bad thing. The problem is, is you're, you had so many good years where your plan costs were significantly less than everybody else's. Well, we sort of caught up with the Joneses, unfortunately. When you look at where it says minimum value standard in preferred plans, the city sponsors two plans to give employees choice. And basically, the higher that percentage is, the better that plan is. And a plan that rates 81.5% means for every $100 that are incurred in claims, 81.5, or $815 is paid by the plan. So the higher that number is, the better. So when you compare your plan of benefits to your five peer groups, your benefits are as good or better than anybody's. That's something to be proud of. It's hard to find good employees. It's hard to keep good employees. So this benefit plan is your recruitment and retention tool. So we can't mess with that too much. When I look, no, go back, the contribution approach, this is something that's real important. The City of Hopkinsville, 2024 year-to-date city, employees are contributing 16% of the cost of the plan. If you compare that to your peer groups, that's high. So the average employee's putting in $198 per month in this health plan. That's the highest number on the board. So from, from my perspective, the employees are doing their fair share, if your peer group means anything. And I think it means everything, because those peer groups want your employees, too. They want, I mean, they want, they want an attractive benefit program. Thus, the city's contributing 84% or $694. That 84 cents includes that deficit balance of 348. So if you were to, if you, if the city were funding that deficit of 348, and you added that to 694, what the city's being, is putting into the program is on par with the others. I guess my message is, is we need to take a serious look at what we're putting into the program per employee per month on a regular basis, because medical inflation exists. It's three and four times what everything else is, and we're still putting in money as if it were in the 1990s. And we have, through, through great planning and finding extra monies, have been able to sort of keep it on life support. But I just don't know how much longer we can do it if the trend continues. So I just, I wanted to give you all that update now. I, I hope that our reserves will, will, will continue to stay level or grow some so that we can get ourselves to the next fiscal year. But when the, when it comes time to preparing that budget, we really need to take a serious look at what we're putting into the plan. Are there questions? Yes, Chuck?
You're talking about adding additional funding. Do you have a recommended amount per month based on what you've?
Absolutely. Right now, we're running at $348 per employee per month. Now, that's through August. Now, September, it got better. We're running at $315 per employee per month. But when you multiply, if, if we truly, if this is the new norm, and this path continues or gets worse, at a minimum, you know, 300 times, 140 times 12, it's a million dollars. That's a lot of money. I mean, that's a significant amount more than, than what, than what you've ever been asked to put in before. But, but let's don't lose sight of this. This isn't as if we are funding this money all the way to Anthem. This is money that's, that's being funded to your plan. So if, for some reason, you are, you get into a situation where you're overfunding your health plan, and that's the way it used to be back in the good old days, when we had a million dollars in health reserves, we were overfunding the plan, and anytime we got an increase, we just went to the reserve balance and took from it, so that we didn't have to go to your employees and ask for more, didn't have to go to councils, council to ask for more. Nothing would please me more if we did decide to put $300 per employee per month in there in their billed reserve balances. And, and because you're paying yourself, in essence. And if, if we ever got to a position where we were building those kind of reserves, so we could slow down the spend, or the, slow down the contribution. But it's time that we took a serious look at what we're putting in per employee per month. Because it's going to be hard to find 600, $800,000 just lying around. It's just not there, I don't think. No, it's not there. I hate, hate to be the bearer of bad news, but thi- this benefit is the reason why a lot of people work here and a lot of people stay here. This is, this is your recruitment and retention tool, and you got a good thing going, it's been managed well, it's just that we probably have, had, probably should have made adjustments along the way even when times were good. But it's hard to go ask for putting more money in when you got a million dollars sitting in reserves. But it doesn't take long for the million dollars to go away.
Any more questions from that? Yes?
Good evening, thank you. If you're going to initiate any raise on the pricing for the city or the employees, what's the process of that? And how long would that take?
Well, as a, as a matter of fact, coincidentally, we're actually entering into our open enrollment period. Our plan year, the benefit plan year, unfortunately, does not run on your fiscal plan year. So our benefit renewal plan year runs January to December. And leadership made the decision not to change benefits and not to make, not to change contributions for the health plan for this plan year, because we, because history says the claims experience is going to improve over the next three months. So we are in the process of going out to all of your employees. As a matter of fact, we've already conducted the open enrollment virtual meeting where we updated everybody about these, any changes, but good for, the good news is, is the premiums and the contributions aren't changing. But from city councilor's perspective, I mean, that would have to go through the budgetary process, I would assume, and those adjustments would not be made until July 1 of 2025. We just got to get to July 1, 2025. If we don't, I mean, we're, we're tracking this on a, on a monthly basis. Melissa's closer to it than I am, but I'm watching it as well. If we get too far in less than 200,000, we might see us again. But we're hopeful to get to fiscal year to make some adjustments. And if that's not enough, then, then maybe we entertain discussions about benefit changes or contribution changes from your employees' perspective come January 1 of 2026.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Majors?
Thank you, Matt. Hey, thank you all very much.
Appreciate you coming to give us an update. Alrighty. Next on committees and officers will be monthly financial statements. Ms. Clayton.
So we'll start off with the interfund transfers, like we always start. We had four interfund transfers in the month of September. We gave to Military Affairs, $5,000. We gave to Focus 21 Leadership Sponsor, $1,000. We gave to the museum for our gala sponsor of $1,000, and the Christian County Senior Citizens, we gave $1,000 to. Total interfund transfers for September was 8,000 year-to-date. That makes 12,000 total, so the remaining balance in the interfund is $88,000. Our payroll tax revenue for the month of September is above budget. We have collections so far at $5,749,910, and we had budgeted $5,366,803. So that is a 12% increase, which is better than it's been the last two months. So I was a little bit relieved when I saw our payroll tax revenue has kind of rebounded a little bit in September. Our insurance premium tax through the first quarter, and this is the number I really like to compare, oh, year over year, because they can pay at any time, usually within that quarter. So we are running a 20% increase in equivalent premiums for the year. So we collected through three months, $1,725,128. Our business license revenue is a little bit down from where we were this time last year. We're at $503,792. So general fund, we started the year prior year incomferences of 348, 328. We have collected year-to-date revenue so far of $11,807,730. Our year-to-date expenses are at $13,826,653. So we have more expenses than we have revenue right now. This is very standard through September because we hit, you know, October's property tax month, so it's coming. Last year, our revenue over expenses was low, was a lot lower by almost half a million dollars. So our revenue over expenses right now is $21,8,923. Last year, it was $24,6764. So we're about the same as we usually are in September. So municipal road aid, we started the year with $37,200 in incomferences. We've collected $198,994. We've spent $649,628. So we also, municipal road aid, have more expenses than we have revenue. Our capital fund, we did our first quarter transfer. So we started the year with 316,463. We collected so far $580,571. Our actual expenses are $524,745. So we have more revenue right now in capital than expenses at $372,289. So let's look at how each department is doing. Administration Department, so through three months, we should be right about 25%. Admin's at 25.7, taxes at 28.9, information technologies at 36.8, and legislative is at 21.3. Police Department is at 26.8, ECC is at 28.8, the Fire Department is at 26.6, EMS is at 28.1, and fire prevention is at 22.5. And our Public Works Department, Public Works Admin's at 24.5, City Maintenance is at 25.7, Fort Campbell Contracts is at 18.8, the Service Center's at 25.6, Parks and Rec was at 33.8, Sports Plex is at 18.7, and the Water Park is at 60.8. So overall, for total general fund, we are running, our expenses are running at 26.5% of budget. Municipal Road Aid is at 67.5, and capital is at 19.4. So when we look at our cash balance, we started the year with $17,617,425. We have year-to-date receipts of $11,807,730, less our year-to-date expenses at $13,826,653. So our cash balance at September 30 was $15,598,502, less our incomferences of 149, gives us our available cash at $15,449,178. So when we take our available cash and we subtract out our reserves, our unassigned cash fund balance is $11,982,634, and that is at 27.5% of our adjusted operating budget, which is the lowest we've seen probably since this time last year. So our cash fund comparison between last year and this year, last year we were at 22.7, this year we're at 27.5. So I think we're okay. Be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about September's financial report.
Any questions for Ms. Clayton? Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Item C, Annual Board of Ethics Report. Ms. Clayton?
So for this year's annual Board of Ethics Report, for the year ending in October 10, 2024, the Board of Ethics received three complaints, all of which were dismissed after a preliminary inquiry. For advisory opinions, they had one request, and they also reviewed the list of individuals required to file a financial interest statement, and there were no deficiencies found.
Alrighty. Thank you. Item nine, approval amendments. Need a motion?
So moved.
Amy and Terry? Alrighty. All those, all those, any discussion on that first? Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty. Moving into item 10, Ordinance 28-2024, Old Major Lane Zoning, second reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, zoned properties located on Old Major Lane. Whereas Community and Development Services initiated a zoning map amendment by Resolution 2024-06 to assign the original zoning designation of R2 Single Family Residential District to properties located on Old Major Lane. And whereas Community and Development Services made favorable recommendation at their August 26, 2024 meeting for City Council to approve original zoning application R24-8-1. And whereas City Council concurs, said recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan, and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the zoning of the properties. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1 pursuant to KRS 100.211 Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, Community and Development Services Resolution 2024-06, and recommendation dated August 26, 2024. The properties as further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein are hereby zoned R2 Single Family Residential District, 170 Old Major Lane, 150 Old Major Lane, 140 Old Major Lane, 130 Old Major Lane, and 120 Old Major Lane. Section 2, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved. Second. I've got Steve and Jason. Any discussion? Alright. I call on Clerk Coleroe.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Hi.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
That passes on second reading.
Alrighty. Ordinance 29-2024, Small Business Commission, second reading.
An ordinance amending Section 33.272 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances relating to the Small Business Commission. Now therefore be to ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, Section 33.272 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances hereby amended as follows. 33.272 Meetings Quorum. The Commission shall meet on a regular basis, at least monthly, with additional meetings upon the call of the Chairman or Vice Chairman as needed. All meetings shall be held in accordance with the requirements of the Kentucky Open Meetings Act. The meetings shall be facilitated by the City Administration within the discretion of the Mayor and City Administrator. Seven Commission members shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. In the event any Commission member has more than three absences within one calendar year, said member may be removed and a replacement appointed to fill the unexpired term at the discretion of the Mayor. Section 2, if any section subsections, sentences, clause or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Alright, need a motion?
So move.
Got Bruce and Terry on that? Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I call the Clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
That passes on second reading.
Okay. Item City Ordinance 30-2024, I'd call on Councilman Keel to speak on this from Solid Waste just for a second.
Thank you, Mayor Knight. Just, we talked this morning, and just before we do this ordinance, there were a few things we wanted to clear up on this. I think there's, you know, been a little confusion. This is not a rate increase of any sort, and I'm just kind of putting this out. I think most everybody here understands that, but for the public, this is actually a new service that is being offered by Solid Waste. It's not a charge for the homeowner that by ordinance has a right to put their stuff out, get it picked up. This is a new service mostly for, gonna be for landlords doing set outs, contractors that don't have enough debris to constitute a dumpster and don't want to haul it off in a trailer. It's giving some folks some choices as to how to get rid of debris that they are required by ordinance to remove. So I just wanted to be sure before we went on with this that, and I appreciate you giving me the chance to, to explain that as a board member, that this is a new service, it doesn't change anything for the homeowner, it is for the, the contractor, the landlord, and the folks that don't by ordinance have the ability to set it out and it be picked up and not a code violation. It's, we're just trying to, to give everybody a chance to, to do it the right way, and this was discussed at, at length at, at Solid Waste and at Committee of the Whole, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to explain that.
Thank you, Councilman Keel. It's just another way for us to help keep the city clean, and that's one, one reason we're pushing forward on it. Ms. Brittany, would you read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 93 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances relating to trash and building material collection. Whereas the Hopkinsville City Council Committee of the Whole considered a recommendation from the Hopkinsville Solid Waste Enterprise Board to amend Chapter 93 relating to trash and building material collection, and add provisions to create a new service and set the rates for said service. And whereas the Hopkinsville City Council Committee of the Whole referred said amendments to the Hopkinsville City Council. Now therefore be to ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, Section 93.02(c)(3) of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby amended as follows. 3, except for limbs no more than 2 cubic yards, 6 feet by 3 feet by 3 feet of building material or trash shall be placed at the designated collection point for any regular collection day at owner-occupied residential properties. No business, landlord, or contractor shall place any building material, garbage, limbs, or household goods at the designated residential collection site. All contractors are responsible for the disposal of waste, including building material or trash resulting from the service they provide. A business, landlord, or contractor may schedule the collection of building material or trash by knuckle boom service scheduled directly within, with the enterprise. Section 2, Section 93.02(c)(2) of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances hereby amended, adding a new subsection as follows. 7, knuckle boom collection rates. 1/4 truckload minimum fee $75, half-truck load $150, 3/4 truckload $225, full-truck load $275. Commercial business, any active commercial account with large items exceeding container space may be charged the following knuckle boom service. Knuckle boom fee $75. Section 3, if any section subsections, sentences, clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 4, any, any and all ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So move.
I've got Steve, and I have Terry Meeks. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call the Clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
That passes on second reading.
Okay. Ordinance 31-2024, Medical Cannabis Zoning Text Amendment. Call the Clerk.
And I do want to note before I read this that we did have a public hearing today at 5:30, and there were no public comments related to this. An ordinance amending and adding a new section to Chapter 158 zoning code of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky Code of Ordinances to define and establish requirements for cannabis businesses. Summary, now therefore be to ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. As summary, the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky Code of Ordinances, the code is amended as follows. 158.002 Definitions. 158.002 is amended by the ordinance. The ordinance retains existing definitions and amends the code to include the following definitions. Cannabis business, cannabis cultivator, cannabis dispensary, cannabis processor, cannabis producer, and cannabis safety compliance facility. 158.046 Requirements for Cannabis Businesses. 158.046 is created by the ordinance. Subsection A provides the purpose of the section. Subsection B specifies the provisions of the section are applicable to the citing, development, establishment, and operation of a cannabis business within the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Subsection C provides for the requirements for a zoning building permit prior to the citing, development, establishment, or operation of a cannabis business. Subsection D specifies proof of licensure and conformance with applicable requirements to include proof of licensure by the Commonwealth of Kentucky and proof of a City of Hopkinsville occupational license, and requires the licensure by the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the City of Hopkinsville be continuously maintained. And subsection E provides general requirements for applicable to cannabis businesses, including provisions relating to distancing requirements, access restrictions, special signage restrictions, and variance eligibility. Appendix A, Schedule of Uses. Cannabis cultivator I-2, cannabis dispensary B-4, cannabis processor I-2, cannabis producer I-2, cannabis safety and compliance facility I-2. All other provisions in Chapter 158 remain unaffected by this amendment. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned City Clerk of the City of Hopkinsville at 715 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where is it available for public inspection between the hours of 8 o'clock a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday.
Alright, need a motion?
Motion.
Travis?
Second.
Jason Boo? Alrighty, any discussion? Alright, seeing none, I call the Clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
Alrighty. Municipal Order 34-2024, Surplus Properties.
Hopkinsville City Council hereby declares the attached listed weapon surplus property and authorizes the Mayor to dispose of said items by methods available in KRS 65.041.
Alright.
So moved.
Amy? Bruce? Alrighty. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty. Moving to item 12, Other. Any other things for the agenda tonight? Alright, seeing none. Councilman members, comments? Seeing none, I will go into item 14, Closed Session, KRS 61.810. Gee, I need a motion for going to closed session. A motion and second. Travis and Bruce, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, we will go into closed session. Alrighty, we will go into closed session. Alrighty, we will go into closed session. Alright. A German, Ward 11.
Ran across this little quote on social media. It says, "Life may take you where you least expect it, but have faith that you are exactly where you need to be." And I'll close with that.
Nice.
Alright, I have a motion and second. But Terry, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.